I've worked hard enough.
Call the meeting in order, roll call.
Belsley.
Here.
Here. Herman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Yarco. You have a forum.
Thank you. Please do remain in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any public hearings tonight, but we do have a presentation by IDOT. The IDOT presentation is regarding I-74 and I-155, and I think the bids have been accepted, and you guys are all ready to go, so come on forward, and we want to hear about this.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and talk about the project tonight. My name is Maureen Addis. I'm the Bureau Chief of Program Development, and with me tonight is Tom Lacy. He's the Section Head for Studies and Plans. Tom's group did the first study, the planning study, and also has overseen the preparation of the contract plans. This is a very large project. This is an $86.5 million reconstruction of the interchange and the interstate surrounding. This study's been ongoing since 2006. We did the contact-sensitive solutions where we had Citizens Advisory Group for input, and one of the big issues during the early phases was the staging of the traffic and how were we going to move 56,000 vehicles through a work zone efficiently. It's been a very big challenge for us. One of the things we'll talk to you about tonight is we'll kind of show you what's going to happen over the next two and a half construction seasons. Like I said, the study started in 2006. Our final public hearing for the preliminary stage was done in 2009, and we recently opened bids on November 9th. We have not awarded the contract yet. That usually takes 30 to 45 days after the bids. One of the things I'd like to explain is, in six years, that may seem like a long time to you, but for IDOT, that is moving at lightning-fast pace. This has come along really well. The person who did most of the work on the presentation tells you it's a six-year study. If you've been around Morton very long, you probably know that in the mid-'90s, we also studied it, but were unable to secure the funding. So we're very happy that we've opened up bids on this and we're ready to go. Tom? This is a map showing the limits of the project, and they are generally Pleasant Hill to the west, the end of the ramps at Morton Avenue, and then right where the overlay ends now. That whole area in yellow will be reconstructed. You will have all new pavements and all new structures within. Next slide, please. The structures carrying 74 -- or 155 over -- 74 over 155 will be replaced as -- and that's the structures at the abandoned railroad. And I think the next thing in is the tunnels at Jefferson Street will be no more after this project.[251.20][251.20](Laughter). You know, Tom is from Morton, and he had the same reaction.
Had the same reaction.
But in the wintertime, especially if there's a lot of moisture around, those tunnels have a lot of ice lenses that build up, and they are a hazard. And then finally, the structure carrying 74 over Jackson Street will be reconstructed. What changes can you expect to see? Next slide, Tom. You're getting all-new pavement on 74 and 155 within the limits of the project. And this is important. The structures were built in 1961, and the original pavements also, they've been overlaid a couple times. They're at the end of their service life, and it pains me to say that because I was born in 1961, and I don't think I'm at the end of my service life, but indeed, the structures are. The bridges over 155 and Jackson Street will be replaced. We're going to reconfigure the 74 and I-155 interchange. It'll look very simple, or it'll still be in that trumpet shape. The big change will be, instead of 74 going over 155, 155 will go over 74, and that was the big challenge for staging. As I mentioned before, the tunnels at Jefferson Street are going to be taken out, and we're going to replace them with bridges.[343.55][343.55](Laughter). And we're also going to reconstruct the on-and-off ramps at 155 and Morton Avenue also. You'll get highway lighting along the roadway and the ramps, and because we're going to -- part of the pavement reconstruction on 74 includes adding the third lane in both directions, and that's going to require us to close up the median, and that's going to require some storm sewer work. At the top of the screen, you'll see the current configuration, and at the bottom, in yellow, is the new. But you really can't tell -- oh, look at jumping the -- can you go back one? One of the things, when we take 74 under and 155 over, what that's going to allow us to do is the ramp from northbound 155 that goes to eastbound. Right now, it's kind of steep. It's hard for especially the large vehicles, like the semis, to get up to speed and then get into the traffic flow. When this is all said and done with the grade changes, that'll be a much gentler grade, be easier for the large vehicles to make that acceleration. And at the same time, the people that are coming up 155 are going to be -- they're going to have to go up before they hit the slower ramps, and that's going to help them decelerate and hit it at a much more favorable speed when they go. Next slide, please. Construction is scheduled to begin in the spring of 2013. We anticipate sometime around March. The project is scheduled for completions two and a half seasons later. There's multiple stages of construction, 14 to be exact. There's two lanes of traffic in each direction that are going to be provided on I-74, and that is really important because right now, between Morton Avenue and 155, there are 42,000 vehicles that use that section of road daily. Between 155 and 474, it jumps to 56,000, and there's 22,000 on I-155. That is a lot of traffic to manage through a work zone. There'll be one lane carried on 155. What we learned this summer, and we knew from our traffic analysis, is that 22,000 could be handled pretty well with one lane in each direction. There are four traffic detours that are going to be required, and we'll go into those a little later on. In the 2013 season, construction's going to begin on 174. In the first season, if you want to think of it as kind of a two-stage process, most of the work is at the ends of the job. The east end and the west end, we're going to be putting in as much permanent pavement as possible and start work on the structures. We also have to put in, for the second season, when we really tear up the interchange, we're going to need a lot of temporary pavement to move the traffic through. So we're going to be constructing temporary pavement just south of the current I-74 lanes. And there'll be a little bit of work on 155, but most of it -- the temporary pavement and getting the structures replaced on Main Line up top on 74 are going to be the bulk of the work. We're also -- at this point, we will begin putting in the Jefferson Street structures, which means the main detour that's going to last most of the season, I believe, is on Jefferson Street, and we will have to detour some of the 155 traffic. When the Jefferson Street tunnels are going to be replaced, we have to use a bit of a local detour utilizing Jackson, Veteran, and Detroit. Ramp E, when we're doing some of the structure work, it's just going to be impossible to have the merge in that close to where we're building the structures, so we have to shut the ramp down. This will happen in the -- in fall of 2013. It won't be the entire season, but at that point, instead of going up and on like you normally would, we're going to divert the traffic down to Pine Crest. One of the things that we worked on during the first preliminary engineering is, we're trying to not do any marked detours through town. We're trying to keep the large commercial traffic up on the interstate where it needs to be. In 2014, and in the winter between, everything should be open and everything close -- as close to normal as you can do in the middle of an $85 million construction project, but you'll have two lanes up top, and all the ramp movements should be restored. 2014 starts the construction of the north ramps at I-155. Anything north of 74, the tight loop and then the outer ramp. Next, Tom? We're going to shift I-74 over to the temporary pavement, and northbound 155's going to be detoured up the ramp that we had closed at the latter part of 2013 to Morton Avenue and then back on. Anybody wanting to go southbound is going to have to head over to Pine Crest and then come back, and we'll show you the detours here. We realize that not everyone will use the detours, that a lot of the local people will find their own way around, and that is normally expected. A lot of what we're concentrating with these detours on again is the heavy commercial vehicles, the stuff that really can choke the roads. In the last season, we complete the constructions on 74 and 155. With all this temporary pavement and moving around, you're going to have little gaps we have to fill, and that's what we'll concentrate on in the last part of the season. And we'll complete the construction ramp at Morton Avenue. We can't do it all because one of the loop ramps that's going to be taken out, we need for the detours. By 215, for the main line, for the through road, you should be on the new pavement. And traffic will be able to make all the movements at Morton Avenue during construction. And we hope to be out of your hair by mid-July 2015. This is what you have today, and this is hopefully what you'll have in 2015. And just as a point of reference, if you can look at that top one, you can see the trees in the middle of the ramp. Notice in the second one down below how much farther out that loop ramp is. That's the difference between a 25 mile an hour design and 30 and 40. It's going to make a tremendous difference in how that operates. And this is Morton Avenue as it exists today, and this will be the new configuration, and there'll be traffic signals at the first terminal. I would like to let you know that we've set up a meeting with the first responders in the area, the emergency services, that we're setting up for, I believe, it's January 7th. We want to make sure that -- I don't think we can over-coordinate at this point. We have a website that has this presentation on it. It has -- if you want to know about the 14 stages of construction, we had one we presented to the contractors that they have, that you can look at that to see what's going to be going on with each of the individual stages. We're working with our communication center at IDOT to develop a website that will have links to all the cameras in the area, so if you want to go and kind of see what's happening traffic-wise, you have the ability. We're going to get the word out as many ways as possible. This is a large project. It is going to be disruptive. We're going to try to get in and out and minimize the congestion, but it's going to be a lot to do. So, any questions?
You were talking about cameras. Are you going to bring some cameras closer to Morton when it's completed?
Yes. That's one of the first things that happens in the contract before we actually start doing a lot of ripping and tearing. One of the first things is, they're going to put up the cameras so we can have surveillance at the interchange site.
I think your 40,000 number is wrong. I think that's how many's on North Morton Avenue. I'm not sure how many are on 74.[908.81][908.81](Laughter).
Well, it's a lot of traffic anyway. Our numbers say 42 from our traffic counters, so.
I do want everyone to know that IDOT has bent over backwards for the Village of Morton. I mean, on this whole project, they are constantly in communication with our engineer, our city engineer, it's constantly been in communication with me. I've been part of the plan that the -- I never can remember the name of it, but we're with the group, community input and all of that. In fact, I think we have a -- I can't think of a time that I could have -- that you haven't done what we've asked and been there when we needed you. So I want everyone to realize, when we're thinking bad things about IDOT in a couple of years because we're having to do something on here, please recognize that this is the best that could be done and still have this work done because those overpasses are falling apart. They can't stay there any longer. We put up with the work in Peoria for how many years? That was a two, what, four, three, $400 million job? I think we can put up with this for two or three years. So thank you two very much. Thank everyone, and we really do appreciate the relationship that IDOT and the Village of Morton has. So thank you.
Thank you.
Want to gather up your stuff? Okay. Next thing is public comment. I'd like to make a -- I'd like to make a comment on public comments, if I may, since we have a large crowd here. Many people wonder about public meetings, and so I kind of want to explain what this is about. This is a public meeting. It's not a meeting of the public. A public meeting is a meeting in which we give time at the beginning of the meeting to ask for community input. Our practice in the past, when we've had large numbers of people, to limit it to five minutes a person, 20 minutes to the subject area. I do want you to know, though, that if the board, by consensus, feels that we want to extend that time, we can do so. So the difference between a public meeting and a meeting of the public is, is we give you time in a public meeting to speak, but once the meeting starts, we do not respond to any questions from the audience or anything like that. We're a public meeting, there is that community involvement. So I just want to make sure there was no confusion and no hurt feelings in case we have to say that time is up, so. All right, Mr. Hall, were you going to do a presentation first, or?
I appreciate the opportunity, Your Honor.
This is the opportunity.
Your Honor, members of the board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bob Hall. I'm an attorney with the firm of Miller, Hall &amp; Triggs in Peoria, 1125 Commerce Bank Building. I'm also here as the Attorney for, and speaking on behalf of Elevate Church, 1060 Jackson, here in Morton. I'm here to address your -- the item on your agenda, which is coming up under the so-called noise ordinance revision and amendment. I would like to address two things. One is the proposed ordinance itself, and the second is the subject, which appears to be the catalyst that has driven us to this point of the consideration of a revision of the ordinance, and that subject is Elevate Church. Let's take the first of the two, the proposed ordinance itself, and that's the main reason why you're here, is to consider that and potentially vote on an amendment. In that regard, I'm not sure exactly where things are with respect to the actual proposal that'll be before you today for tonight. One is that with respect to the proposal that was introduced at the last board meeting by Trustee Belsley, I can say we can certainly support that. With respect to one that was provided to me as recently as noon or so today, which purports to be a revision, I would say we'd have to oppose that. And specifically, the reason for that is, is in the context of that noise ordinance revision, it purports to give an exemption. An exemption is in sub-paragraph eight of whatever B. And in that regard, it purports to give an exemption for activities that a lot of groups might do, but that are only exempt for public bodies, such as the village, such as the Park District, such as the School District. So if you have a private body, a private church, whether it be a private school, whether it be a private football league or something like that, that has a sporting event right here in one instance, right next door, and all in each and every way, exactly the same, a public one is exempt. We suggest that that's inappropriate, improper, that's unlawful discrimination. We submit that if you're going to be at all adopting laws, they ought to be uniform, non-discriminatory, not only in their proposals and in their actual wording, but also in their application. With that exemption, as it now is, we submit that that's a standard that has not been met. With respect to all of that, I'd like to address the second subject, and that's Elevate Church and its services. In this context, in the case of the initial reading at the last board meeting, there were several people that made comments relating to that subject, as well as negative comments about Elevate Church, to which we feel there's a special need to respond. The points that I'm going to cover in responding are as follows. One, a brief introduction of who and what is Elevate Church. Two, what is this sound? It's actually music, but what is this music about, which complaints are being made? When does this music occur? Scientifically, I emphasize scientifically, what is the actual strength and impact of this on surrounding properties? Next, why not just shut down the music? Next, and to borrow a phrase from Art Netherton, with whom I've spoken several times about this matter, "Why don't you just turn it down? How about a seven or eight to a seven?" Finally, have things been done to address the situation, and are things further being All right, who and what is Elevate Church? Just very briefly, to make sure you're aware of the many people and what they're here for and who they're here for. Elevate Church is an outgrowth of the Riverside Community Church out of Peoria. In 2008, the group of individuals that now essentially are participants, partners, members, whatever you want to name them or call them, in Elevate Church, took over a facility in 2008, which was the former Assemblies of God there at 1060 Jackson. At or about that time, that operation was basically defunct. That group started with about 70 participants, and now, on average, each Sunday, they're getting about 800. With probably on the Easter holidays and Christmas holidays, expecting between 1,700 and 2,000. The point is, this is a growing group of people. They're enthusiastic people. They're young families with young children. I would suggest that they share the values that you would embrace. Approximately 70% of the participants in Elevate Church are residents and citizens of Morton. They consider themselves a part of the Morton family. They support the community, want to support it further, want to volunteer and help, and that's maybe a challenge to you. If you need help, they're ready for you. What is this sound and music regarding the complaints? There's various times where music is played in and from the sanctuary. This is inside, not outside. It's from an electronic sound system amplifying the performance of live music, live musicians playing. So what are the times and duration that this is being done? There are three days out of a week that it is done, Saturdays, Sundays, and Wednesdays. On Saturdays, they have a practice period, about one hour, between 2:30 in the afternoon to 3:30. They have what they call a runtime, where in getting ready for the service on Saturday, they have a runtime of about 20 minutes between 4:45 or starting 4:45 and 5:00. Then, on a Saturday night service, typically running from 6:00 to 7:00, they would play about 20 minutes. Sunday, there's a 20-minute runtime that is between 8:15 and, say, 9:00, 20 minutes of music. And then there's two services, one at 9:15 of about an hour, and one at 11:00, at about an hour for which during that hour, it is about 20 minutes of music. Finally, on Wednesday, on a grouping where they call the Student Ministries, there's about a 30-minute period of practice time between 5:30 and 6:00, and then about 20 minutes during the service, which is sometime beginning around 6:45 or 7:00. My point of this is that these are not late-night hours. These are not tremendously early morning hours, other than on a Sunday morning when it's time to basically attend church. So with respect to the next point I want to cover then, scientifically, what really is the impact and strength of this? Because of this issue, the church arranged for and sanctioned a sound study. It's been made available to Attorney Davies and maybe perhaps to you, I don't know. But for this study, let me just suggest to you, there were two different dates during the summer that it was done. During this time, all doors were wide open. And in addition to that, the sound system was turned all the way up, as high as it possibly could go. So this is the worst-case scenario. Readings were then taken at the property line of the nearest neighbor. Just to summarize a few things of that, basically, the highest, emphasize highest, in the worst-case scenario of that sound system blasting as much as it could, there were tones in the bass that reached a decibel level of about a 53.8. I'll come back to that, 53.8. By comparison, let's look at a few things. During that same time, the decibel readings, the sound pressure readings were taken of the ambient environment, what was there, the wind through the trees, the traffic, the birds chirping. That typically, on average, would reach as high as 43 decibels. Continuing the comparison, normally, and this is all part of that study, normally, if you and I are engaged in a conversation out in that parking lot, we would generate to each other about 70 decibels in our discussion. In order to get down to 53.8, which is the highest that this church music produces, in a worst-case scenario, that two people talking with each other would have to get 25 feet away. So you're not talking about anything much more than a normal conversation in a parking lot out there of people 25 feet away. By other comparison, typical lawnmower, let's look on the other things. At a property line, right next to it, it produces between 90 and 100. If you go 100 feet away with that lawnmower, it still produces 67, which is substantially still above, but you can imagine, think of a lawnmower 100 feet away. So yes, there is music from this church. There is sound that can be heard at the property lines. There's not that to be denied or controverted. But I would suggest it is not at, based upon scientific measurement, at an unreasonable level or one that is excessive or loud. Why not just shut down the music and not have it entirely? I hope you can accept this with some simple statements, it's simply like this, that music is an important and an integral and energetic part of religious worship to most and at least many religions, and for Elevate Church, that is no different. I would dearly hope that that goes without saying, and I would hope that it goes without quarrel. But then the question becomes, in words of Art Netherton, "Why not just turn it down? Eight to a seven." Well, let me point out that the church actually did do that for a while, only even on a greater extent. They took their volume level at a 10 and lowered it to a 6 for over a month. The consequence of that was no change in the intensity or the intolerance of the complaints that were continued to be registered during that period. The question becomes, okay, are we -- do we have anything to gain with that type of thing? Also, please understand that there's a certain energy or field that causes one to be more into or engaged in what is the experience or the moment that is intended, or is it the objective of your service, or your process, or your event. Please excuse an extreme, but if I were going to invite you all to a dance party, I'm not going to produce the music with the speakers from my iPhone. The point I'm making, albeit extreme, is that indeed, there is some level The point I'm making, albeit extreme, is that indeed, there is some level of toning things down at which your objective just is so impaired that you can't really, in good conscience, go any further. At that point in time, there's a question, simply one of, do you give up or do you stand up? And believe me, it's somewhat hard for these people, members of your community, to say, stand up and say, "No, no, no, this is too unreasonable to expect us to do anymore with the objectives and the missions that we have." As I got into this matter for the church, and it's the first time I've had a chance to work with them, I more and more thought surely, in light of, as Tom Davies explained in the last board meeting, this is a slippery slope for any public body, and it is. It's a challenge. So I thought surely there's maybe some authority of guidance that might be helpful, or stuff like this, and on the facts, more or less on the law, I was looking for something on the facts. Curiously enough, and I produced this case to Tom Davies, and I might say this also in the context of this, understand that even the First Amendment has limits. I'm not here to try to suggest to you, because this is a religious body, they can get a jet engine out there from a 747 and run it in the parking lot and not expect you guys to be upset, or to try to stop it, or to have good reason and be lawful in stopping it. So there definitely are limits. So I'm trying to say, well, what might I find? What am I finding? Well, interestingly, there's a case pretty close in, from Phoenix, Arizona, and again, I furnished this to Tom, but just briefly, there are three churches, each that had one of these electronic Carillon systems, and as to one of these churches, and this is the one where the facts come pretty close, the church would five times a day play a melody on this system out of their steeple or their roof. It had this melody from Handel's Messiah, then the bells would ring at the end chiming the time of day. This would happen five times a day from nine, the morning, nine at night. A scientific study showed that the nearest neighbor had a peak level of decibels between 65 to 67. Now, that's 23% higher in decibel sound pressure than what Elevate Church is producing. The federal district court in that case entered an injunction enjoining and ordering the city of Phoenix not to interfere or impair, or try to enforce their noise ordinance against the church under those specific instances. Consistent with that case, I'm just saying and suggesting that the music produced by Elevate, based upon what that scientific analysis showed, what I think your own ears would show if you were to go out there, is that it is not unreasonable, even though at the property line it may be heard. A lot of things can be heard. There's a lot of sounds in the community that are just typical sounds, that are welcome sounds, that are a sign of life and vitality rather than death and boredom. Finally, what has been done? What are they looking to be doing further? They have had acoustical panels put into the walls, and there have been time changes. They originally were starting at 7:15, everything was slid back at least another hour on Sundays. With respect to what further can be done, there are things that have been and continue to be looked at. One is that sound experts said if you put a fence with landscaping up, it could diminish the impact on neighbors by as much as six decibels. In discussions with the neighbors, I'm not so sure that they believe that or they want that. And there's been other things, well, maybe apply that same, those several thousands of dollars inside, and that's being looked at too. Specifically, one of the problems with the noise primarily getting through the building, which is primarily through the roof, is that they are bass waves, they're long waves. They take massive thickness of insulation to really suppress or attenuate. So we're not in a situation where, I think, as Art suggested, just put some carpet on the floors or something like that. It's a much more major undertaking than that, but nevertheless, it's something which is on the list of things for the church to be doing, and obviously, it's a matter of further analysis, a matter of cost affordability, and so forth. I would only close and say that seeing yourself is believing. I would say that the church would welcome, with open arms, wholeheartedly, any one of you out there to see for yourself. I don't know, maybe some of you have, or I shouldn't say that, hear for yourself. You have the times, you're welcome, and we can only say and hope that, whether it be with you or with the neighbors, that we will continue to pray and plead for patience and further tolerance as this matter continues. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Anyone else like to speak? Please give your name.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. My name is Chris Taves. I'm the executive director, volunteer on the leadership team at Elevate Church. Unfortunately, our pastor, Pastor Brian, cannot be here tonight due to a medical issue with his wife. They're okay, but he gives his regards. Just have a quick comment to follow up Bob. First and foremost, we do not believe this to be, we don't believe it to be, it's not unreasonable. And like he was saying, we'd invite each one of you board members out to the property line at the times of the experience service to hear for yourself. You're more than welcome to come. We do not find that we're being, it's just not unreasonable. And secondly, all we're asking for is equal application of the law. There's much louder sounds produced from the high school football games, from the soccer fields, from many other events happening in the Morton area that are being produced from Elevate Church, and as I've suggested, please come and find out for yourself. I'd like to just read a letter here from a former neighbor who lived along the property lines and what they had to say. This was written July 18th, 2012, to says, "To whom it may concern, we've lived in our home since 1987, and we have enjoyed being neighbors with Elevate Church, formerly the Assembly of God. We've never had a problem with the church. Indeed, they have been most gracious about allowing us to use their parking lot when we were in need of extra space. We were aware that several of our neighbors are very unhappy with the noise level coming from the church, and while we like our neighbors a lot, we simply do not agree with them. We have never thought that the music was too loud or too obnoxious. We do hear music from time to time, but it is usually on a Sunday morning, when we would expect to hear music from a church. We bought this house knowing full well that we were in a church's backyard, and quite frankly, it wasn't a concern then, and it is not a concern now. Here's what you will hear on a Sunday morning in our neighborhood. Lawnmowers, barking dogs, an occasional motorcycle, children laughing, and music from the church, and none of the above is horrendous. It's just a part of life. Pastor Brian has been extremely gracious when talking to us about the noise level. We truly believe he is willing to do most anything to keep his congregation happy and to keep the neighbors happy. Next week, we'll be moving to a new home that we built in Eureka, and we want to make it clear that we are not moving because of the church. We are happy that Elevate Church is growing, and we wish them well as they go about doing God's work. Sincerely, Larry and Marilyn V. Lee." So I'll leave you with that. Again, I do not believe that we're being unreasonable, and I'd submit that to you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else on another, on any other issue? Please come forward.
In all honesty, I've been done with the church, so they can kind of go.
Oh, I'm sure somebody may come up after you, so we'll leave that one open after you. You didn't know this was happening tonight, did you?
No, I did not. So I feel sorry for all of you people that are here, to be honest. I'm Ann VanderVorn, and I'm here just to kind of, I'm frustrated, and the reason I'm frustrated is because I own property on Main Street, which is adjacent to the property that you all have just purchased for the downtown plaza, which in all honesty, it's kind of interesting that these people are here, because I think what you all are doing for downtown Morton is fantastic, to try to get it revitalized and do what it was 30 years ago. I sent you all an email, I hope you all got it yesterday, and I'd just like to read. This is from Jim Beckendorf to Mike Bush, and it says, "There is no dispute between the Village and the Grims or any neighbors as to the actual parcel conveyed." And I just want to say that's not true, because I did go to Jim Davies and to, I mean, to Jim Beckendorf and Tom Davies this summer, saying I was confused, but before I went to them, I thought, okay, who is going to know about plats and deeds and land and taxes? And I figured if I went to the Taswell in Pekin, if anybody knows plats and taxes and all that, they would. So I went there first, and they were very, very nice, opened their plat and said, "Okay, Ann, this is what you own. You own track one. This is a connector, which we're talking parking lot. This is the connector. You own this. You've been paying taxes on this since 1981, virtually 30 years." So then, I said, "Dean's not going to be happy with this, because Dean thinks he owns it." And they said, "Well, let me tell you, if Dean's not happy, you tell him to come talk to us, because this is his property here. He owns track one. This connector isn't even to his property, and he hasn't been paying taxes." So I thought, "That's easy." So then I go to Tom Davies and Jim Beckendorf. They two were very kind, but to be very honest, they were typical lawyer as far as the jargon. It just went right above my head, so I thought, "Fine, I'm wrong, I'm shutting up," and I went home and did, said nothing else. Then I appreciate, Norm, your comment when I emailed. You emailed me back, and you said, "I suggest that you contact Tom Davies, Jim Beckendorf. For the owners of the property, I think they can explain to you and determine." Well, I've already talked to them, and to be really honest, I called my attorney Lubinasi in Peoria. And to be very blunt, I think way too many attorneys and too much money has already been spent on this thing to begin with. That's my opinion. Then, two days ago, I got these two pieces of paper. Now, this is where it gets stinky, and this is where it gets very fishy and confusing. This is a deed that's to Ann VanderVorn, 1981. I've been paying taxes on this land, and I own track one, and this is the deed. This is a deed from Dean Grimm, that he owns track one, that hasn't been paying all the taxes, and this was notarized in 89. So I'm thinking to you, "Well, I'm confused. If I've owned this property since 81, and I've been paying taxes on it, and Dean supposedly owns the same track one, and he's been not paying taxes, from what I've been told, since 89, I don't understand what's going on." So that's why I've just come to you, because now I'm showing my age here. I had a clothing store for 30 years on Morton, and one of the reasons that I was successful is because I owned my own building. Morton is a fabulous town, they do support you, but I think some of the things that go on with people are underhanded. I think it's not fair, and I guess what I'm really annoyed is, I'm showing my age, but it's time that we give some of the youth in Morton a chance, with some property, because you can make it in Morton if you own your own business. But if all of us old people start buying the property and stuff, we're not giving young kids a chance, and I'm sorry, if you want Morton to thrive, in my opinion, you need to give the kids a chance like we had a chance. So I'm sorry, thank you for my time, or your time, and if, like I said, I'm confused about all this, so.
Don't be sorry.
And good luck to you all, and I do like music, but you know.
Thank you. So anyone else want to do a public comment? Yes, sir. Please give your name.
My name's Kip Bolt. I'm part of the leadership team at Elevate Church. One thing that I did just want to piggyback on what Chris had said is, to be really clear, there was an article that was written, as I'm sure everyone read, about Elevate. What I'd like to say is, to be super clear, the mission of Elevate is to serve this community, to love our neighbors, to understand their complaints, but at the same time, understand, as was said, that there comes a point where we cannot lower the music level without adversely affecting the way that our experiences are run, and adversely affecting the goal of our, what we call experiences, which you may know as services. To also add to that, one thing that I would say that has made this even more frustrating is that also, in addition to the noise complaints, there have been other complaints against the church, notably complaints about some of our members parking on public streets legally, not blocking driveways, not blocking fire hydrants, not blocking intersections. There's been complaints about that. There's also been complaints of small children playing in our parking lot during normal daylight hours. So in combination with the noise and the additional complaints, it kind of has started to feel to the members of Elevate that maybe there's some underlying issues that maybe are not being brought to the table, that we would be open to discussing, but we can't fix something if we don't know what's broken.
Hi, my name's Art Netherton, 377 North Oregon. Since I was referenced by Attorney Hall a couple of times, I think I ought to respond. What he didn't reference was that I, there's a lot of good people here, people I like, people I've made friends with, but also people that I think sometimes
Mr. Netherton?
Don't have any regard
It's to us.
Okay, yeah. Don't have any regard for what else is going on, but I wanted to make sure they understand
I think they can hear you.
That, you know, the whole issue, and what Attorney did not reference is that I, in my comments, I said it has gotten considerably better. People to my south get a lot more music, louder than I do. What all the scientific studies don't tell you is that when you can feel the bass on your floor, I don't know what the scientific outcome of that is, what the decibel readings are, but I know if I'm standing in my bathroom and my floor is rattling, it's obviously going to be a little loud. A gentleman just referenced complaints about parking on the street legally. There's no problem with parking on the street legally. What we object to, what I object to, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, was just this past Sunday, people parking, because it's cold now, it's going to get colder, people parking on the street on Oregon and cutting through my yard to get to the church. That's what I have a problem with. Last summer, this was going on. My wife is sitting outside at the patio table, people not even look up, don't even, you know, have any reference that she's there, walk right through the yard. That I have a problem with. That's not the issue. The issue was sound, but I think that the whole thing goes to, sometimes the, they are saying that we're intolerant of the music in the church. I'm not intolerant to it, I just want some courtesy. And I know it was referenced by the attorney that they, the pastor, reached out to the Velas, who are no longer living there. I don't know, that he's never visited my home, he's never visited any of the other homes to my south that I'm aware of, so maybe some outreach on both directions. We outreach to them and had a meeting. I think that we need to understand that common courtesy goes both ways, and I respect what they're doing, I respect that they're bringing a lot of people in, but, you know, we need to have this be a two-way street.
Thank you. We're coming close to the 20 minutes, so is there anyone else?
My name's Todd DeWalt, 106 South Meadowview Lane, Morton. I've had opportunity to talk to you quite often at church, even outside, and I think you're awesome. And maybe not everybody in this room, I think, I've been naive to it, I don't read the paper, I try to avoid the negative news, I try to stay out of drama. I think a heartfelt
To us.
And this is to him also.
He can hear it, he can hear it.
If, I think, we know this is going on, we will definitely address this, and I would only say that as a church body, we apologize for that, and we would ask, actually ask the neighbors to forgive us, and we will correct those issues, so I hope you accept that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I mentioned about the practice of the timeline and everything. We also have a practice in which we do not respond at the meeting about issues or during the public comments section. If there's something that one of the board members or myself feels that we need to bring up, that will be placed on the next agenda, if there's anything like that that needs to be talked about. So with that Yes, do you have another topic? Please come forward. Didn't want to hurry, I'm sorry.
Well, that's all right, I just wasn't sure whether we were
Yep.
Done basically with the Elevate portion. My name is Mark Middleburg, I live at 823 Emerson, and my reason for being here today is to express both my frustration and concern with the new waste disposal plan, and, but also, at the same time, to thank you for the efforts that you have put into that you have put into working toward that. For those of you that are here and to make this more of a matter of public record, on the fourteenth of November, I wrote an email to all of the board members, and I thought I would read that and also read the responses that I've received. I said, "I'm writing to Mr. Newhouse with a copy to the rest of the village board because it's my understanding that Mr. Newhouse was the primary individual responsible for negotiating the new garbage and recycling collection plan for Morton with Grimm Brothers." I'll insert a paragraph right here that it was later explained to me that he wasn't necessarily the primary responsible person. That was a misunderstanding that I'd gotten. Anyway, this letter is intended to express my strong dissatisfaction and frustration with both the cost and the strategic direction of the plan. When we first moved to Morton twenty-three years ago, there was a flat fee at that time for monthly garbage disposal. When the village board took what I thought was a bold initiative to encourage recycling by implementing a pay-per-container fee for garbage collection, I was very supportive. And for the past twenty years, it seems to me that the concept was successful and it's also saved residents money and it showed real leadership. We now have a new plan that appears to completely reverse those gains made in the past. It will not encourage recycling and it'll cost my family over four times what it has been costing us in the past few years. I believe the new cost structure is also age discriminatory. We currently, and I'm talking about my family, recycle everything as permissible. And therefore, since we are only a family of two, our kids have grown and moved, we average only one garbage can per month at the current sticker cost, which is about $2.70. We frequently travel on weekends and generate very little garbage. But now, because we're not yet sixty-five, we're being told that we have to pay fifteen dollars a month and there's no incentive to recycle. I understand and well appreciate the need for Grimm Brothers to eliminate the manual handling of cans and tubs by using a new arm on the trucks with new containers. I've got no objection to the new containers. But I think that both the village and the Grimm Brothers could be more creative and cost-conscious if they maintained some form of pay-per-use plan. I would be willing to have a cost increase since I realize that costs have gone up. And even if we were to double the per-use cost to six dollars for a large container or four for a small one each time that I'd set it out, that would be fine. But don't charge me for not generating garbage. One idea would be that with a little bit of technology application, the containers could be barcoded and the arm could have a reader and record each time the container is dumped. Then the resident could be billed for the number of times that the garbage is actually collected. Then if I'm going on vacation, I don't have enough garbage to bother setting it out, I would pay less. And also, it'd be faster for Grimm because they wouldn't have to stop at my house every week. The new plan will likely take Grimm longer to complete routes because now people will be setting out containers with only a very small amount of garbage to pick up each time. Another idea would be to encourage neighbors to work together, save money and save Grimm Brothers time by sharing containers. Even if we were charged a lower monthly fee each month, it would save time for Grimm by only having to make half the number of stops each week if only two neighbors shared. I was told that sharing was, quote, "stealing services." And that, that's something I was told a couple of years ago. I was quite surprised by that statement, and it would be the equivalent of saying that if my neighbor and I were to buy one large box of trash bags at a discount store and share the bags, that the cost from one of us was somehow stealing business from the store. The reality is that each of us would still generate the same amount of garbage and use the same number of bags. We would just buy one box more frequently rather than each of us buying a box less frequently. The same principle applies to garbage collection. Why pick up one-third containers, one-third full containers at each house every week when it could be done faster by picking up half the number of containers on route that are each two-thirds or three-quarters full? So I asked, you know, please consider and reconsider and revise the program, continually encourage reduction, reuse and recycling, lead central Illinois communities with new and better ideas. Please don't discriminate against those that are under sixty-five and produce yet less garbage. Keep our costs low rather than doubling or tripping, raising monthly costs by four-plus times. I'm proud to live in Morton and have been proud to tell others about our recycling program. I hope to continue to be able to tell them how we've improved it even more rather than telling them we just reversed progress by effectively and dramatically taxing the residents. Thank you for a service to our village. And that was the original letter they wrote. Almost immediately, the mayor responded, saying that an additional response would follow later, and I appreciated that quick response, Mr. Mayor. So, the response came from Mr. Kaufman, which I very much appreciated. It came two days later. He said, "The mayor asked me to respond to your concerns about the garbage contract, Trustee Jeff Kaufman. I can tell you that the board has worked on this contract for several months and looked for the best way to be cost-conscious, and we tried to think of all options. Grimm's had no cost increase for seven years, and we sought contracts from two companies, and no one was going to be anywhere close to what we had been getting our garbage haul away for. Bottom line is, if we could have stayed with our original program, the sticker price would have gone up to nine or ten dollars per sticker, and that's not what the village needed. Citizens are tired of blowing garbage from tubs for the recyclables, so the roller containers should help this. Also, citizens wanted a Morton cleanup day once a year, and that's now in contract. Also, we can drop off our used motor oil and electronics at Grimm's office. If a person's sixty-five, they can get a thirty-five gallon container for only twelve dollars a month instead of fifteen dollars rate for the sixty-five gallon containers. Also, we have in the contract the start and stop option, where the homeowner may stop payment for up to three months if on vacation or for whatever reason. Citizens can still drop off yard waste all year long at Grimm's office. The next bidder on this contract was five to six dollars higher and did not have all of this in their proposal. We got the best deal we could get. No other community has this program for fifteen dollars. If you wonder why we need a drop-off for used motor oil, the EPA inspected and tested our creeks a couple of years ago, and they tested too high, so we had to do a complete study, which cost the taxpayers approximately $250,000. That's a lot of money and time spent that could have been used better. So looking into the future, we have a way for our citizens to get rid of oil instead of dumping in the creek, which is illegal. Also, in this contract, Morton will have two hazardous waste pickups, so we don't have to get this stuff dumped in our creeks and down our drains. Also, all we need is to recycle it. It is hard to get the government to allow more dump sites. They want us to recycle and not put into our landfills. Jeff Kaufman. Mr. Kaufman, I very much appreciate your response back to me, and I'm assuming that that was on behalf of the board. But I replied back to Mr. Kaufman later that same day. Thank you for taking the time to reply to my letter and for the explanation of the many features and benefits of the new program. I also appreciate the diligence that the board has done trying to find competitive quotes and good service. Please understand and recognize the following points, which I was trying to make, but you did not address in your reply. I stated clearly that I understand the need to raise prices. I have no objections to a cost increase. But my main point is that the new plan no longer has an incentive for people to recycle and help hold down costs and put less in our landfills. I think people should pay for what they use. Number two, your reply did not acknowledge or address either of the cost-saving ideas, being the technology or sharing that I had mentioned. Number three, I stated I have no objection to the type of containers. I think they're a good idea. But in parentheses, yet you gave a good explanation of why they were being introduced. Number four, while I appreciate the plan assumes that those over sixty-five probably are on a fixed income and may produce less garbage, why not let everyone who produces less garbage have a smaller container and a lower cost? Number five, I appreciate the fact that there will be a cleanup day and the Grims will be again accepting used oil. However, it's easy to let people know that they can take their oil to any of the automotive service shops in town. Most all of them will gladly accept it. I've done it for over twenty years, taking my oil to at least four different locations in town who properly dispose of it as part of the oil they recycle from their own business. Why pay more yet at Grimm's for what is already a free service at several places in town? I've talked with several other people, and we understood the additional features and still have two questions. Both the original letter that was sent out, and I'm talking about this letter that was received in the mail and this flyer here, talk about the fact that there is an opportunity to stop for a vacation up to three months, but nothing addresses whether that's once a year or multiple times per year, but don't know how often we can do that. Number two, the letter says that we can receive or will receive a mailer from Grimm Brothers with billing choices, and I asked about whether any more information about that billing because it's not clear whether we'll get billed in a utility bill like we used to over twenty years ago or whether Grimm will be billing us directly or how that'll happen. So, that, again, I said, "Thank you for your attention and service."
Thank you for your comments.
Subsequent to that, that series of correspondence, the last point I'd make is I've had additional conversations with other residents, and it's been explained to me that I believe we've already signed a multi-year contract with Grimm's, and therefore, while I appreciate your time, I think it may be a moot point if we've already locked ourselves into something that can't be changed. If that's the case, I've had several residents express their frustration over the fact that we've, we've done that without what they felt was sufficient public opportunity. And maybe there was, maybe there was opportunity in prior meetings that, you know, unless we were attending on a every week or every two-week basis, we didn't know we could participate in. And the other point is that there are a number of people who, at least it's our understanding that if you don't participate in the garbage collection program, then you also can't participate in the recycling program. You don't get a recycle bin if you don't buy the fifteen-dollar-a-month service. And some of my friends are individuals who are business owners, and as part of their business, they have complete dumpsters, and they put their home garbage in their dumpster, and they pay for it and they own the business. It's not really any form of cheating, but then they don't have the opportunity to get a recycle bin at home. And they feel like, you know, they'd be double-billed in those scenarios where they'd like to get rid of their recyclables. It's our understanding also that Grimm's, in some of the correspondence, is set to accept either waste or recyclables at their place of business, but I talked to another resident yet today who had been to that, been to Grimm Brothers, and they said that they're not sure that they're going to accept traditional recyclables beyond the cardboard, the electronics and the oil, or that they'll accept other waste on a pay-per-use basis. So, we'd like more clarification and a much clearer understanding of what's really going to take place and some provisions for those that need recycling, even if they don't need garbage disposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any, any others? Didn't mean to step on you.
All right, that's all right. I just want to make sure that the Elevate part was done.
Hi, I'm James Lauer. I live at 202 West Shore Drive. I've actually had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Newhouse about this issue. I concur with everything Mr. Middleburg said. I also have a person who expects to pay five times as much for my garbage disposal, starting in January, because, again, we are very careful about our waste disposal. We recycle about everything we can. In fact, my wife is very difficult about that. And so I understand that it's okay to discriminate against people like myself. Mr. Newhouse made that clear, that there was many people in town like myself that was going to pay much more because we didn't generate a lot of waste, but that, in fact, the majority of people who do generate their waste, it was better for them. And so I do believe this is discriminatory. I don't believe it's very proactive as far as trying to prevent more waste by this community. And I agree that we had a very good system before. And he tells me about the truck with the arm, but where I'm at, we don't have a truck with an arm. And I actually talked to the garbage man today, and he expects to get no truck with an arm. So I'm not quite sure what's going on, other than I expect to pay a lot more for my garbage disposal. And I'm not quite sure who negotiated this, but I'm not sure they had the right thoughts in mind when they were doing it. So as far as I'm concerned, Grimm Brothers were the winner in this situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any others?
My name's Ray Fray. Came here to support Elevate. But now that the garbage came up, I want to discuss that. I think it's a very good idea. I have been the Morton garbage collector for three years, so I do a little over a thousand homes a day. This automated arm that we have, yes, it works awesome when it works. Everything's mechanical, it's going to have problems. When it doesn't work, I feel like a ninety-year-old man at the end of the day. He wants to get in and out a thousand times. So you're getting out a thousand times and getting in a thousand times. It kills me. Plus with wages and everything, I mean, I think it's a good price, really. I haven't had a very, very slim raise within three years. Economy's always getting worse and worse. I got a wife going to school full-time and trying to make ends meet, but I do, I think it's a very good system. Really, really saves a lot of, a lot of labor. I mean, but other than that, I mean, with stealing service, recycle doesn't make any money. Recycle makes money depending on how fast I move. So, we lose money every single day. Every time that truck starts up for recycle, they're losing five thousand dollars a week in diesel fuel just right off the bat. Other than that, it all depends on if I'm at work, if I get sick. I mean, we're losing money every day, so every little bit helps. And I really do like this cart system, recycle everywhere on a windy day. I know everybody has seen it. Everybody has. And if there's nothing you can do about it, chase it down, you'll be working till the next morning. Other than that, just want to, thanks. Thanks for the time.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to say I appreciate his service, but anyway.
Anything else? All right.
Your Honor, would you accept a bit of disruption as many people leave your area?
No, no. Anyone who wants to leave, it's fine. It's totally up to you. But I would like to go to the next section of the public comments, and this is a request for removal of items from the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is approval of the minutes and the regular minutes on November 5th, 2012, approval of the bills. Under ordinances, ordinance number twelve dash eighteen, ordinance authorizing the execution of IMLRMA, the Minimum Maximum Contribution Agreement. And number two, ordinance number twenty dash, twelve dash twenty, an ordinance for the levy assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2012, and ending April 30th, 2013. This is the first step in the levying process, the taxing process. People are probably wondering, what does this mean to a homeowner? Because we are under P-Tail or the tax caps, the increase is somewhat determined by that law, and on the, so it'd be approximately in the area of a three percent increase for the average homeowner because the CPI increased three percent. So it may be slightly over, probably won't be under, but somewhere in that, in that area. Our levy is higher than that, and it's higher than that because it's based on the expenses we have, less our anticipated revenue, not counting taxes, and then that tells us what taxes we should levy. Does not mean we will get that money, though. So, just a short schooling on municipal taxation. No resolutions and under other business approval proposals by Voorhees Associates LLC for a performance evaluation system. This is a not-to-exceed amount of $5,153. With, if we need additional forms, evaluation process forms, it would be $600 each. With, if we need additional forms, evaluation process forms, it would be $600 each. Is there anyone in the audience that's left, like to move anything down from the consent agenda to action item eight, consideration of items removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there any that the board would like to move down? May I have a motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Belsley.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, under my report, I have a report that I received, and that I've been working on a railroad advisory committee now for probably a year or so, and the whole process here is trying to get rail service between Peoria and Bloomington-Normal. We had this 60 years ago in the inner urban, but times have changed at that time, and it was discontinued. There's a few people in the Peoria region who feels that we need to be looking 30 years out as to what the needs of our communities may be, and there's a strong possibility that we will need, we will need a rail service again. And so, we're looking at the cost of that, we're looking at potential ridership, we're looking at all aspects of that. Now, is this going to happen tomorrow? No, it's not. I said 30 years out there, 20 maybe on the short end. It's going to be a lot of money, and the question is, is whether the communities along the way will support it. Right now, we're looking at possibly all the way over to Peoria Airport, all the way to possibly in the area of Bloomington-Normal Airport. There is a planned, at this point in time, stop in Morton, and that stop would be North Main Street at Oakwood Park area. That's not the preferred stop, because it's quite a ways from where the people live, but it's the only rail that goes between Peoria and here. So, I just wanted to tell you, you're probably going to see more about this, this rail possibility in the next few months to years, and I've been fortunate enough to be on it, the committee, and the members are working extremely hard to determine whether this should be done or not. The economic development aspects of it are significant, based on other railroad endeavors that occurred throughout the United States. So, just a short item there. And I'm going to add an item to my report, and that is a proclamation that I do. Now, all of you know I do not do proclamations very often, so, but this one, I think, is extremely important for the Village of Morton. Whereas the government of the Village of Morton, Illinois believes that small businesses are the background of our economy and the glue that holds communities together, according to the United States Small Businesses Administration, there are currently 28 million small businesses in the United States. They represent more than 99% of the American companies and create 2/3 of the net new jobs and generate half of the private gross domestic problem, product. And whereas small businesses employ 1/2 of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 93% of the US consumers believe it's important to support the local small business that they value in their community, and 89% agree that locally-owned independent businesses contribute positively through taxes and jobs, and whereas Morton, Illinois supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups and public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now I therefore, Norman Dersflinger, Mayor of Morton, Illinois, do hereby proclaim November 24, 2012, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants of Small Business Saturday throughout the year. And I signed this today. Please, if you can, shop Morton first. I understand sometimes you can't find things in Morton, and then that's fine, then shop in the region, but please try to shop Morton first. So, thank you for my extra item here. Mr. Clerk, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Madam Treasurer, Controller.
First of all, tonight I'm asking approval to transfer $22,000 from the General Fund and $1,000 from the Water and Wastewater Depreciation Fund to the Capital Projects Fund.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second over there. Discussion? Roll call.
Herr.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
The next item on my list is an ordinance number 12-19, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the Plan of Operation and Governance. This is in relation to the Electrical Aggregation Program, and essentially, they've determined that the, there is legislation that will allow us to offer the .0408 rate to new residents that move into Morton, or if there was a, if there was a person that was on contract before and they've come off, we can offer that rate to them, and they would get onto our plan and just go with us till we end, you know, it was a 24-month plan, we're a few months into it. And how this will happen is Ameren will send Homefield Energy the information on people that are eligible about every two weeks, and they will send them a notice where before it was an opt-out notice, if you didn't want to be a part of it, now you have to opt-in. This group of people will have to opt-in. But if they choose to join, they will receive that .0408 rate, which I spoke with a man on the phone earlier this week who was just asking if he could do this, and whenever I told him the rate that we were getting, he was pretty excited at the, at the idea that we would be able to open this up to new, to people that were coming off of a contract.
Okay, so it's administration's recommendation to approve ordinance number 12-19. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Motion passed. Any other items?
No.
Chief?
Assistant Chief?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Counselor?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Chief?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Leidermuth?
I have two things tonight. First, I'm asking for approval of a three-year contract with Phelps Uniform Company for Public Works Department Uniform Rental, and at the back of your packets, it shows you a bid tabulation. There were five companies that bid, and Phelps was the lowest. That's the approximate cost of the three-year contract.
Okay, it's administration's recommendation to approve the three-year contract. So moved, Your Honor. Second?
Second.
Mr. Herr? Any discussion?
Who has the contract now?
Currently, Aramark has the contract. They've had it since 2009. Phelps actually had it from 2006 to 2009.
They were second bidders.
And the overall cost is going to be a little bit lower than what it was actually the past six years, the overall three-year cost. I didn't put an exact amount, because there's still things to tweak. I tried to make the bidding as fair as possible to offer it to this company, so.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Second, I have in your packets the Public Works recap for the month of October. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Okay. Just a reminder, on behalf of Public Works and the Fire Department, check those batteries.
Great. Carbon monoxide season again, very important.
All right. Mr. Spangler?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Under the trustees, Mr. Belsley.
I had one item. This is actually a continuation of the review of revisions to the noise ordinance. You'll recall last meeting, we had the first reading of that, and allowed that to be available on file for comments, and we did have some revisions that were under consideration I wanted to draw your attention to. You should have received an email from Attorney Davies today with the latest revisions of that, and I just want to direct your attention to them. I don't intend to call for a vote tonight. We want to still allow this to carry over to a future meeting. There's no rush that we need to call for a vote on the final changes or amendments to the ordinance, but specifically, the changes that are currently, have been made, Section B 2, under exemptions, and this is in regards to customary activities for building or home improvements, property, landscape-related activity. We had hours of operation for that to occur between 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM, and we shortened that an hour. Thought it best to limit that to 9:00 PM, so there is one change there with the hours or acceptable hours for those activities. And then in that same section, we also added some language that would authorize the Superintendent of Public Works, under her, Public Works Projects under his jurisdiction, for him to allow those activities to begin prior to 8:00 AM or to go beyond 9:00 PM. And part of that, the logic behind that, if you recall, this past summer, we had a record year of heat, and really, for the safety and the well-being of those involved in those activities, it's in their best interest to start things earlier in the day, and if the need be, then to extend them to a later hour, but that would be at the discretion of the Superintendent of Public Works. And then one other change is in paragraph eight. Actually, the previous provision had two paragraphs there, and we combined paragraphs eight and nine, and that is in regards to any activities that are sanctioned by the Village of Morton, the Park District, or the School District, to be exempt from the other limits of the ordinance, and this would include any number of various activities, sporting events, outdoor activities, music, arts in the park. Right now, the Village is sponsor of or sanctions 35 to 40 events a year, and that's just the Village of Morton, and the majority of those are hospitality-related, tourism-related activities, and those have only grown in recent years. So, we thought it'd be foolish of us to write such an ordinance that would really prohibit or limit those type activities that are in the best interest of the whole community. So, we did address the language to allow for those activities, and that's really it. Again, as I said earlier, we're going to carry this over, we're going to have that on file at the Village Office for review, comment, consideration, and then we'll vote on this, the final version of it at a later meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Herr?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right. And Mrs. Herman will give us her legislative proposals at the next meeting. Mr. Kaufman?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor. Except the yard waste is still open till December 6.
Would like to ask you a question, and that relates to the garbage contract. The contract is, of course, has already been approved. Is there any question about what recyclables will be picked up and not picked up? Can the contractor determine which recyclables are going to be picked up and not picked up? It's different than what our contract states.
The contractor?
Yeah.
It's in the, it's in the contract. They highlight what item.
So, it's not a decision of the contractors?
No, it's not at the discretion of them to.
Okay. Thank you.
Agreed. Steve, I don't know if you were going to comment on that.
No, it's laid out, item, it's itemized in there as what's approved.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kaufman, it's all yours.
That's it.
Or Newhouse, I guess.
One item, Your Honor, carryover from the last meeting. This is the consideration of ordinance number 1216, second reading for the ordinance that would amend the minimum lot size ordinance. You have at your table on your side, a handout of items. Hold that up, mine's buried. Everybody received tonight. This was from the Plan Commission meeting. The proposal is for an amendment to create, or a new ordinance to create zoning for R1A, which would allow lot widths of only 65 feet at the building line, as opposed to the current minimum of 75 feet, but with an 8,000-square-foot minimum. This would meet the objectives for, from the sponsors, for deeper backyards, which respond to both the desires of the buyers, and also to allow a different treatment, linear treatment of water detention rather than the ponds. If you remember from the last meeting, we discussed whether or not it should include, or there should be considered, R1B, which was not recommended by the Plan Commission that would have allowed 60-foot lots, and at this point, there's no square footage minimum on those lots. The assumption was that they would be used in areas where you couldn't come up with another configuration and would not constitute more than 30% of a development. So, for the purposes of discussion, I will move to approve the ordinance as presented and as unanimously approved by the Plan Commission, which is for the R1A provision, and will leave open then the discussion, if anybody cares to pursue it, of what other changes we might make at this time. This is, I want to just reiterate, absolute confidence in the application of this ordinance in the hands of the people who are now asking for it. It will be a change for Morton. It could potentially change the way houses are built in Morton, and as I said before, it deserves really careful consideration. So, move to approve.
Second, Your Honor.
Discussion? Roll call.
I would, Your Honor.
You had your chance.
I'd like to discuss, in the paperwork here, the 60-foot lots, it looks like they were recommending, or was looking at, 6,500 square foot of the 60s, and I was just wondering if the 60-foot lots is something we need to look at for patio homes, or for those people that want new homes, that don't want big yards, or if it's something the developer could use around the high wires, and that if we need to be a little proactive on some of these developments or along expressways. So, I was wondering if Mr. Spangler could comment on any knowledge of that, 60-foot lots or 65s?
What you have before you this, was, that was kind of my attempt before Tom made it look legal, like the ordinance 12-14 you have in front of you. We did include that in our meetings. There was a committee that we put this together, thinking, like you said, Mr. Kaufman, that if it was an area along the high line, or maybe backing up to one, something that might be less desirable to live near, that maybe these lots could be implemented there. We came up with minimum 60-foot, 6,500-square-foot minimum requirement on the total lot, which, if you do the math, that puts you at about 108-foot deep. If the lot is 60 by 108, that's going to, actually, 108.33 would put you at 6,500. And then, in a given subdivision, only 30% of those lots could be R1B. So, when a developer comes in, they have to give us, they give us a conceptual view of what their subdivision is going to lay out. The Plan Commission looks at that, along with a preliminary flat, and you, as a board, look at that before it gets approved. So, they would know going in that they can only have 30%, whatever that number happens to be, by the lot number that they have in their subdivision. Along with that, the same restrictions or same limitations that you have in the R1A, which is a 6-foot minimum side yard setback, would be observed in these two. Nothing different in the rear, nothing different in the front, but I'm not a planner, like educated in planning, but in talking to people that are educated in planning, that have master's degrees in planning, this, this is a desirable thing. In fact, the City of Washington would like us to do this, because it would probably maybe make things more level.
Second was discussion, the sale of property owned by the public body pursuant to Section 2C 6 of the Open Meetings Act. And the third is discussion of collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives pursuant to Section 2C 2 of the Open Meetings Act. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. I have a roll call.
Herr.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley. Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
I'm going to vote yes with the caveat that we're going to be watching this very closely, and if we find that, over time, it appears that we are losing the quality control that we want, and I'm going to be raising the issue and looking at going back to the 75-foot minimum. I am hopeful, and again, confident with the current project, that quality is not an issue, but, but this is changing the map. So my vote is yes.
And be sure to note that this may be reviewed in the future if there are abuses. All right, closed sessions tonight, three reasons. Purpose, discussing the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body pursuant to Section 2C 5 of the Open Meetings Act. Second was discussion, the sale of property owned by the public body pursuant to Section 2C 6 of the Open Meetings Act. And the third is discussion of collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives pursuant to Section 2C 2 of the Open Meetings Act. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. I have a roll call.
Herr.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley. Yes.
Will there be any action?
Oh, nothing afterwards, so no action afterwards.